I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like everyone to stand for the plenary.
Plenary. To the flag, from the United States of America. To the three republics, to the six states. One nation, under God, in the Father, and in the Son. And in the Holy Spirit.
All right, we'll move into item number three, the approval of agenda dated May 19th, 2025.
If nobody has any changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed for May 19th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi and a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Good. Next item of business would be public comment on agenda items. So if anyone wants to...
No Mr. Approval.
Oh, sorry. Approval minutes dated April 28th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Now we can move back to public comment. All right, easy. Next would be unfinished business, which at this time, there's none documented here. We will move into number seven, new business. Starting off here with the site plan review, parcel ID 1-0612300034, John Hoffman, also known as 65809 Gresham Avenue. So if you guys are here, you can step up to the podium. Please just make sure you state your name, your address, and speak into the microphone clearly. Thank you.
Colin Finch, here with BK Civil, representing the AIS site plan here. 7503 Woodville Street is my address. With me here is Adam Harding from AIS Construction Equipment. My address is 325 Rosie Court. Thank you.
So is there anything you guys want to share before we ask any questions?
Can I just walk you through what we've got here? If you remember, we were back here a year ago or so, a little more, the site plan here for the addition to the existing AIS facility here. Been through with a couple perks with engineering, safety to get to this point. Still have just a small building addition off the back, but now including all the comments from the folks to include water main, along frontage, along Greshit with tie-in across the street to bring in two hydrants around the building to provide fire protection around the building and the addition, as well as striping and pavement for the fire lane to go into the site around the building, back out the opposite driveway, as well as six-inch curb around all paved areas on the site. Further requests of your...
All right. Questions, comments from the board?
I'm just trying to picture like where is it on the site? Because I can see like we got that tent thing up and then the building, is it behind the main building?
Yeah, it's attached to the back of the main building. So if you're looking at the main building from Greshit, if you were looking directly out of the building from Greshit, you wouldn't even see the addition because it's
That's what I thought.
The same width, just directly on the back.
Did I miss something here? Is there an actual blueprint for this addition that shows, you know, the size of the building, the doors? Is there a rendering of the building or the addition that's being put on?
I believe that was provided previously.
I went into my January 22nd of 2024 envelope that I got at home, and there was no rendering in there. If I remember correctly, there was one copy brought that night to the meeting, and we were all supposed to look at it all at one time, and we never got a copy of the rendering of the actual addition.
We can provide that.
That would be really helpful. It also says, "In the January 2024 Planning Commission Meeting, the comments by the township engineer said no pavement improvements were proposed. This being one of the reasons he did not recommend your approval. Now in 2025, the township engineer has no objections about improvements to the paving, even though Mr. Finch cannot find any documentation stating the thickness of the pavement. Mr. Finch says the owner plans on doing core samples to prove the thickness. Was this action completed?"
It has not been completed at this time. It will be upon getting approval here and meeting the engineer's requirements.
And how many core samples do you think you'll be taking?
As many as the engineer requires, but certainly as many as the different pavement sections that are out there. There's been different pavements added at different times. So we've got the asphalt that's on the north, so at least one, the concrete on the north is two, the asphalt in the rear would be three, the concrete on the south would be four, five. I'd say probably in the order of seven or eight.
So only one core sample taken in each section? I mean, because you have no proof as to how thick any of the cement is throughout the whole?
Sure, and so we would do as many samples as folks would need to feel comfortable with.
And Mr. Say, do you plan on being present during these core sample taking?
Yeah, good evening. Let me clarify the first comment that you had about the pavement. We did flag the pavement requirements in both letters. And actually, under page two, it says, oh, once I pavement, maybe either eight-inch thick concrete or pipe maintenance. So that is required.
Okay.
We don't have objection to the site line because those items are taken care of during the engineering stage. And as the applicant stated, they will provide data that the existing pavement will match the strength of an eight-inch concrete or asphalt. So that will be commented later. And as far as our engineering review in the building department, construction permit, that will be a condition as always.
Well, I just only got core samples taken somewhere else recently, and we weren't present. And there was only three taken over a very large area.
We don't need to be present during cores, thus they hire an independent company to do that.
Okay.
And when they do their report, it will be signed by a rest of professional engineer, and that they will be liable for that data.
Okay, I'm referring to this grab over the sand pit. That one there was only three core samples taken in a very small area.
Different project?
Yes, I'm just making sure that, you know, our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. Also, the storm detention pond in January 2024, the township did not recommend approval because the detention pond's design was not for the current township sizing. Is there plans to increase the size of the current detention pond?
There are. There are plans to make the pond comply with all the ordered system requirements. However, the engineering review for that doesn't happen until after the site plan review.
Okay, just like I said on face prints, I just didn't see anything.
Oh, it's...
Okay. And is this addition is attached, correct?
Correct.
So is there going to be fire suspension or suppression added to this? I mean, will you be above and beyond the square footage? Do they have this included in that section?
There will be a firewall between the existing building and the new building, and there will be hydrants supplied around the building.
Okay. So is there going to be any water added to this building? Like no sink, no high wash station, nothing like that? No power washing, nothing? Can you tell me what's going to be this additions, what's going to be, what this is going to be used for? Is it storage or workshop?
Correct, it is workshop space. Basically, getting our people from working outside in the elements, bringing them indoors.
So it'll be heated?
Yes.
Can I ask what kind of heat will be used?
It'll be radiant heat.
Okay. So you are hooking up to the city water, correct? Or public water system?
We're not connecting to the public water system at this time. The building is served by a well, and we're not adding any more people for water usage to the site with this. It's just a shop space, an indoor shop space for folks that have already been outside working outdoors.
And what about a deal acceleration of bypass length? Are those being added or...?
Those are existing.
They're existing already?
Yeah.
Okay, how many employees do you have?
About 35.
About 35? And does that include your co-op students or...?
No, those are, so a co-op student step up once they come into work, that would include that and they have force, so those.
Okay, so there is a bypass lane there?
Yeah, there's a de-selene there.
No, I'm asking about bypass lane.
No bypass.
How many employees does the state, I mean, when they start requiring a bypass lane? I didn't know, the engineer could maybe help me on that.
Commissioner, that's up to MDOT when they submit for their permit for work in MDOT right away. MDOT determines if there's a bypass required or not. We always recommend it because of the traffic count on Greshit, always warrants a bypass lane, but we are not their jurisdictional agency who can always recommend it, but it's up to MDOT to require it or not.
So you did recommend it in this case?
Yes.
So I mean, if they have 35 employees plus all their co-op students, and during the summer months of the co-op students, if they're all starting at the same time or roughly, I mean, isn't that a lot of people pulling in and out of there at one time?
Yeah, it's a function of a traffic count and the traffic study, they will have to submit to the state for that. And again, MDOT reviews that and determines if a bypass lane is required.
And there is no need, obviously, because there's no water being added to add on to the septic field that's on this location?
No, there'd be no change to how much water would flow into the septic. And we wouldn't be able to add on to the septic anyway since there's a public sewer available.
There's sewers, that's what was, yeah, was kind of leading up to, yeah.
If additional sewage flow is added to the site, it would be required to connect to the public sewer.
Okay, because you've added employees. Last one time I asked, there was only about 30, and now you have 35, and that didn't include, you know, co-op students. So I wasn't sure if the sewage field could, you know, is accommodating that many people, plus all the water they use for power washing, et cetera.
Sure, to clarify, that 35 number does include the high school students we have coming? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's alls I have. But other than the rendering, I guess I would like to see a rendering of this addition.
We assume it's going to match existing outside or...?
Correct, yes, it will match the existing.
And then by sacrificing those approximately six spaces, it looks like you still have ample parking?
Yeah, there's ample parking outside.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Same. Good. And I would be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for John Hoffman, 65809 Gresham Avenue, as long as the site is subject to compliance with all applicable township engineering, building, and fire department requirements.
Second.
Okay, we had the motion from Commissioner Turchi and a second by Commissioner Gurley. Can we please get a roll call?
Turchi?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Flur?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Rossio?
Nay.
No.
I'm going to stay complete. Good. Ayes have it, thank you. Next order of business would be 7B, the site plan review of parcel ID 190613300016, Lee Belinski, also known as 3628929 Mile.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the board's time this evening. My name is Rich Clark. I'm an engineer at Pine Tree Acres, and I live here in Richmond at 36804 West Middlewood.
David Lutz, consultant for waste management, 417806 Mile.
Alan Beasley, consultant for waste management, 3578 Monks Road.
All right, thank you.
I do have a presentation. I had emailed it to the clerk. I have a copy. Help me get it.
So what we're here to propose is a transfer facility which would reside on a W1 property owned by Pine Tree Acres that cross from 36629 Mile Road. And the purpose of the facility would be to just serve as a transloading operation to bring in single-street recycling, which would then be reloaded into trucks going to supply the material recycling facility of MRF that's under construction in the Detroit area. And it would also be a place for zero-waste-type materials to come in and be loaded and go on to a beneficial-use facility as opposed to being diverted to a landfill. So this facility would only be loading and reloading materials, no type of processing or organic-type residential waste, nothing of that sort. The operation would be expected to be around 75 tons a day of single-street recycling, which would come in on small residential trucks and then be loaded into a transfer trailer to go down to the material recycling facility and under approximately 50 tons a day of what we call zero-waste, which is cartboards and things like that that we, our customers don't want to landfill but want to see turned into a beneficial-use product. So those would come in and roll off in smaller trucks and then be loaded into transfer trailers for outbound use. As I mentioned, the site is north of Pine Tree Acres on 29 Mile Road. And this is an overhead view of the WMRE gas plant that is in operation today. And the proposed site location would be, in this case, just south of the building that you see on the slide. And this is where we're at so far with what the site plan and the access would look like. And this is a schematic of what the building would look like. It is a concrete port pad, steel building. He didn't, is that correct?
Good afternoon.
Side view of the building. So that's a very pretty full review, but would be happy to answer any questions, board heads.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the table?
So there's going to be nothing hazardous at all involved in this
That's correct.
Transfer station site?
That's correct.
As far as the amount of traffic, a lot of times you see, you know, trucks way out to Greshit. This is going to be on top of those? Is this enough driveway space to handle your amount of trucks you'll get coming in there?
Yes, we anticipate 10 to 15, what we call little trucks, the small residential rear-loaded vehicles that you see in neighborhoods. And then five or 10 trucks carrying the zero-waste. So it's really going to be minimal truck traffic, and they'll be utilizing the opposite side of the property from Pine Tree.
They already come there?
That's correct.
All these smaller trucks already come to?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
But not with recycling?
Correct.
Just the regular trash trucks?
That's correct.
I have another question for the planner. It says here that this is ag, so with this development, this property can stay ag. There's no need for rezoning or anything?
Sorry, what was the question?
Just on the review, it said that this property is ag. And I didn't know if, being that they were building and running an operation, if it was able to remain ag or if they would have to rezone. Because I didn't see anything about the zoning mentioned.
Yeah, this is a zoning requirement, and for the planner, it is allowed.
Okay.
Is there any water being added to this building?
My understanding is that it will utilize the existing tab that is supplying the WMR facility, WMRE facility that's in place.
Actually, you are showing separate tab availability.
Yeah, there is. Public water main was brought into the site for the gas facility about 10 years ago. There will be a water service coming to the building for fire suppression, as well as some residential-style use, hose bibs to wash down the floor. There's no bathroom facilities or no other water-use facilities currently proposed.
So will any of this water that's being used be going into your septic field or no?
No, we're going to have a separate gray-water storage tank for the, any of the sanitary waste from this facility. So it's not any human waste or anything other than liquids that come off from the garbage inside. So it'll go to an underground storage tank for pump and haul.
Where does that water end up going when it's hauled?
Usually, the facilities that come to pump it, they take it to a loadout station for transfer to sanitary disposal facilities. Usually, they'll, they have a direct sewer connection.
Can I ask where the recycle, where the recycling ends up after it leaves there?
It will be reloaded into transfer-style trailers and taken to the proposed materials recycling facility that's underway on Hannah Road in Detroit.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question.
Yeah, what?
If there's no restroom facilities for the people that are going to be there, where do they go?
There won't be a large contingent of workers on location, just an operator, and he will use the facilities at the WMRE plant.
That's the existing gas plant?
Yes, sir.
There's only one employee in there, aren't there? Three, up to three. Is that up to code to have, not have a facility? Even if it's just one person, is it okay to not have a bathroom in a building?
As far as engineering, it's fine, but the building may have a different opinion. They, when they submit the building plans to the building department, they will determine if that is required or not. But we've seen it before. It's just a, it's just sort of a shop.
Essentially, like a bar?
Yeah. And the existing building is only 30 feet away.
Have you looked at like a lighting for this? I know that was mentioned by the planner.
Yeah, during engineering review. The site will have minimal site lighting, like at the scales, either at the scale and around the building perimeter. All will be submitted photometrics and township-compliant like fixtures.
Any other comments from the table? Good.
I have no further questions, and if no one else does, I'd like to make a motion to approve 19-06-13-300-016, 3628929 Mile Road, subject to compliance with all applicable township engineering, building, and fire department requirements, along with clarification on site lighting and a waiver of the sidewalk requirement.
Good, we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi. Clarification, Mr. Chair?
The sidewalk is existing on the road. Was that a...?
I'm sorry, what?
They said there's existing sidewalks.
There is revised letter, so that...
Oh, okay, so would you just take, on my motion, just take off waiver of the sidewalk requirement? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second or a support? And we have a support by Commissioner Malart. Can I please hear a roll call?
Turchi?
Aye.
Flur?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Next up would be 7C, the master plan discussion.
Good evening. I believe the clerk's office has provided you an advanced copy of the master plan draft, including, excuse me, the introduction and the first five chapters. There's still two chapters to go, the future land use chapter and the zoning plan. And what you received, the community snapshot that you've received for existing land use, transportation and mobility is now new for you to look at, housing affordability, which is a requirement under the state law to talk about housing affordability in all master plans. And the township goals and policies, which is updated from previous master plans. I'm not asking for a formal review. You're going to have plenty of opportunity through public hearings and advanced times to look into the big details. I'll also give you a formal presentation of the draft in probably next month or if not, the following month. I'm asking at this time from what you receive, are there any glaring problems, concerns, or questions you have that you'd like me to relook at before we proceed?
I think we went over it a couple months ago, the title there.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think we went over it a couple months ago with just like the title fairs and the wording and stuff.
And I think I made the most, yeah.
Yeah, that was...
The only thing new that you haven't seen is the transportation, housing goals.
I have a few things that... Again, on page 24, the 26 Mount Leau Green City Highway, I think county line should be included in there. And on page 30, bear with me.
I'm sorry, in 24, you wanted the county line should be...
Yeah.
Okay, and then page 30? Yeah, okay.
Okay, it says Pine Tree Acres is a tight-tune non-hazardous municipal solid waste disposal landfill and is only active landfill in McComb County. It provides services for Michigan communities located in the southern east Michigan. Is there Canadian trash that comes there?
There is some Canadian trash, yeah.
So that should maybe be included in that sentence.
Good. I'm ready for exchanges.
And... It says Pine Tree Acres is regulated by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and works closely with its host community Lenox Township to ensure compliance with all state and federal regulations. And I know they had an issue with asphalt millings a few years ago. They just didn't know about it. know about. Is there anything else they discovered that you didn't know about?
I don't understand the question.
Well, it's just saying that they're being, what does it say? Works closely with Lenox Township to ensure compliance with all state and federal regulations. So if they were using asphalt millings and they told you that they weren't, are they being compliant?
I'm not.
Not compliant in other ways, I guess. Do we know?
I don't know, and I wasn't aware of the issue they're talking about.
Oh, okay. Page 32. It talks about soils with few or no rocks that is a prime farm land. I mean, just so you know, I mean, up by 32 mile road and 28 mile road, there is a lot of rocks in the soil. I don't know, you know, I guess you've not been on the farms looking at the fence roads and such, but our yard is full of fieldstone and that will come from Lenox Township. So there is rocks in the soil in many parts of the township. Page 35, there's also a typo in there. Further down in that paragraph, it says thus removing them for the township tax rolls. That might want to be looked at. Page 37. Existing land use. These factors significantly impact the overall character and image of the township as well as the quality of life and our level of satisfaction with our surroundings. Where does the landfill come into this? How big is it allowed to get? How tall is it allowed to get? Because that's going to significantly reflect the quality of our life and our level of satisfaction in our surrounding area. Do we know how many acres they're allowed to expand or how tall the landfill is allowed to get?
I do know there's probably another 25 acres of landfill capacity there. They're also looking to work with the county and the state to expand landfill footprint that hasn't been approved as of yet.
But do we know, is there plans for it to get taller? Do we know how much taller?
I have no idea, I'm sorry.
You have no idea? Page 38. This map would be more helpful if it had like the major roads on it.
That's a great idea, yes.
Just a suggestion. Hang on, page 40, it says this classification is applied to all land use for crops. This is about existing land use about agriculture. So it says this classification is applied to all land use for crops and permanent pasture lands in addition to other agricultural activities such as boarding stables, trees, shrubs, nurseries, similar types of specialized agricultural activities are included. Why wasn't the landfill included in this? Because that's considered agriculture.
It's not considered agriculture.
Well, it's zoned agriculture.
Yeah, that's different, it comes from agricultural land uses.
That was, I was confused on that.
These are land uses we're talking about now, zoning.
Okay.
Well, where does the landfill fit into that, Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Where does the landfill fit into that if it's not under agriculture?
Landfill that's listed is, depends what you're talking about, future land use, existing land use, the county, the semicon, I said, I showed you the green, which is all agriculture, which is very general, but I would not call the landfill more of an industrial, public as I public, public use.
So would they be added to the industrial section?
They'd be added to future land use, we talked about industrial at the end of that part of it, but we haven't got to the future land use by yet.
Hang on, page 46, under trail connections, a connection along Bradshaw Avenue from the village of New Haven to the Lenox Township Civic Center.
Yes, sir.
It's not really clear and I guess it would be nice to know what properties you would want to involve in this.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and I agree, except the county hasn't designated the property yet.
Okay. They won't have eminent domain, will they?
I doubt it, I mean, they could have the right to do that, but I doubt if they'd ever implement that. They haven't in any other case.
Okay, on page 47, I'm sorry, page 39.
Which, I'm sorry, 49?
Yeah, page 39.
39.
I think I confused myself here. It shows about agriculture has the largest acreage, oh yes, okay. So it's going to be page 47 is where we're going to end up at, but on page 39, it shows agriculture has the largest acreage use in the township. And on page 47, it starts talking about these complete streets, about bike lanes and all this, you know, narrowing the lanes, you can narrow the roads because of electric vehicles and driverless vehicles. It says the agriculture community, so where does a combine fit into this if you're going to start making the roads a little more narrow or a planner or a field cultivator? So I mean, these need to be taken into consideration.
Okay.
Oh, and garbage trucks. Page 48, again, it's, it was important enough to be put in this packet, package. So if the roads are to be reduced in width, again, it's repeated, how is farm machinery supposed to get from point A to point B if there's going to be consideration, you know, to have these complete roads as they call them? Okay, on page 49, about the housing affordability.
Yes, sir.
Is this included to change the two acre minimum building ordinance? Are we trying to influence us to have smaller parcels of land to build homes on?
This is something that the state's requiring us to look at, will happen. This is just, the master plan gives you the goals that we're going to look at housing affordability. Once this is adopted, the planning commission, township board, if they want, would need to implement measures which could include reducing lot size, may not, which could include adding accessory dwelling units, may not, could include any of those, reducing minimum house size and lot size. But that's not, this is just talking about the options available to any community.
Okay. But Lenox Township as a community, we will have final say in all of this?
Unless the state passes legislation contrary to that, and I can already tell you that there was legislation put forth last year that didn't make it out of the session, but it's probably going to come back, which will require all communities to allow a second home on single family property.
I mean, I get these, the A U Ds, I understand that. I mean, that does make sense if you have two acres, yeah, you could put a mini house or, you know, that sort of thing, I understand that.
There, you know, the state always has the right to examine zoning.
Okay, on page 54, there's talk about streamlined development approval procedures. I agree, time is money, but houses shouldn't be made easier to gain quicker local approval process than a business. If that's the case, there should be a business streamlined development approval procedure section written in this packet, just like the streamlined development approval procedure for housing. I think that's kind of discrimination. So I don't know, again, if that's with the state or federal or.
The township would do that if they wanted to after the passage of the master plan and put back provisions to the master plan.
But then, would that not be fair to have something in there for a business? I mean, why would it just be for housing?
Yeah, what would the intent be, what, so much we did, it would be for everything? This is under housing for the building.
Yes, there wasn't one there, isn't a section for business.
Right.
Under township goals and policies on page 56, it says, the guide development to foster the responsible use of land. And again, I feel like I'm kicking up dead horse or whatever, but again, Pine Tree Acres, I hope, I don't know what we have to say about this, but how big are we going to let this thing get? And also, it talks about at the very end, about wanting to promote construction in the township using green technology. This building here was designed with green technology, if I remember correctly, wasn't it?
Yes.
The windows now need money for shades if we promote solar panels on different properties. There was just, I seen an article in Nebraska, I mean, we get hail here, hail happened in Nebraska, the cadmium from the solar panels, the ground has been contaminated now for 300 years. So I think we need to be careful as to what green technology we are going to be promoting. And I guess is there a geothermal or geothermal heating in here that there were some issues with as well?
Is there a question? I'm sorry.
Well, I just, well, I'm just trying to remember, is there geothermal heating issues in this building as well that was with green technology?
I believe there's been some issues with this building.
So I guess.
And that doesn't mean we're not going to promote.
No, but we just need to be careful what we promote, I think. I think that's it, that's what I got.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the table? Okay. Anything else to say or do here? Great, then I'd like to move into item number eight, public comment. Nothing there. Number nine, communications and/or committee reports. I believe there to be any this month. Okay, township planner, anything else you'd like to report tonight?
Nothing to report.
Anything from the table?
I just have one thing, and I know I was the only one who voted nay on AIS edition. And I just want to make it clear as to why I did vote nay. I've never voted on anything that I haven't seen a blue print, blue print plan for, a rendering drawing, and I just found it kind of odd that we had no drawing for this edition. That's all.
And I guess to clarify on that, I mean, is that required to have an elevation view showing the sightings and things like that? So was that just not provided to us, but the township had it? Or was that not provided at all for this instance?
I'd have, I'd have to check, I have not seen it.
Okay.
Typically, they're required on new construction, this is an addition, maybe that's why it wasn't submitted. I'd have to double check for an answer, give you a satisfactory answer.
That's what I was wondering as well, just because I figured they would say they're matching existing, but I think as Commissioner Rousele said, I mean, sometimes even when people say they're going to match existing or provide a certain exterior, they go a little different way, so I.
Actually, it shouldn't be provided though.
Yeah.
I, like, again, a disleniency on this matter, I find rather shocking.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, but I think the first round, they did some elevations and details.
It was just a small piece of paper, I believe that they wanted us all to look at one piece of paper and.
Actually, I do, I do have plans, there were floor plans, ice sheet, elevation plans. I don't know if they assumed that is, is already submitted to the township, maybe that was the case, that they didn't include it in this round, I'm not sure, but that's, that's not engineering anyway.
Sure, I think the overall concern is there's just been a couple of instances where the table and the board doesn't get all the information or it's brought to the meeting or we're lacking and then we make decisions and we don't want to hold up businesses and things, but, you know, when it continues to happen, I do agree, you know.
We need consistency.
Yeah, 100%.
And that definitely was a lack of consistency.
So I think just making sure that, you know, we all have all the information at a time to make sure we can make proper decisions is all we're asking.
Okay, anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:16?
We have a motion by Commissioner Churchy.
Support.
And a support by Commissioner Malart, all in favor?
Aye.
Nice having you, Commissioner, thank you.